Call this Tuesday, April 9th, meeting of the Currituck Planning Board to order. At this time, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask for disqualifications on some of our cases. I'm going to recuse myself from the first case, 2333 Clooney LLC, and Mr. Ennis is as well on that case. Mr. Owens is the vice chair, so he will do that case for us, and then I'll come up and take over case item two, three, and four after that. Is there, I don't believe there's seen no old business. We're going to go ahead and move into new business, and that first case is 2333 Clooney LLC. And we have a quorum. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that. I see so many people out in the audience. Y'all have gotten me nervous. So, we do have a quorum. At this time, we're gonna, and we've made changes to the agenda, so I'm going to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Moving on to item five, approval of the minutes from our March 12th, 2024 meeting. If everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes and there's no changes noted, I'm going to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Say.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Seeing no old business from staff, we're going to go ahead and move to new business. The first case again is 2333 Clooney LLC, and at this time, I'm going to step down and I'm going to have Mr. Owens take over. I'm going to pass you the gavel too, to make it official.
First item on the agenda is PB 23-33 Clooney LLC. The applicant and owner of Clooney LLC submitted a conditional zoning application to rezone 3.43 acres from single-family mainland to conditional general business. The applicant is proposing a 10,500 square foot, seven-unit contractor services building, and the property is at the intersection of Tolls Creek Road and Keratoke Highway here in Currituck. This time, we'll have staff to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. So, here's the site and the request, as he said, was for conditional rezoning of 3.43 acres from single-family mainland, which is a residential zoning district, to conditional general business for the purpose of constructing a seven-unit contractor services building. The site is located at the intersection of Keratoke Highway and Tolls Creek Road and is situated adjacent to Currituck on the Sound, and it is near the river's edge subdivision as well. Currently, it's zoned, single-family mainland, as you can see here. Across the street, there are some general business lots, one of which I believe has a mechanic shop on it. Here's a shot of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan classes, and you can see indicated by this orange color that that is G2, which is controlled growth. Here's a map of the flood hazard zones, and as you can see, there is a portion of AE, which is a special flood hazard area that's located on the property here. Here is a conceptual plan for the development that's being proposed. You can see here that there are wetlands on the property, and these hashed areas indicate areas of wetlands that would be filled. And here is the main building with some parking in the back and two entrances, so they could kind of loop around the backside and come out. Here are some building elevations that were submitted with the request. This would give you some idea of the type of buildings they would be constructing. And here, again, some awnings that I think they were proposing for the front, something similar to this. So, the current zoning, single-family mainland, is really intended for, well, obviously, housing. A number of other uses are appropriate for that zoning district, for example, libraries, schools, gardens, community gardens, that sort of thing. What you won't find on this list is contractor services or anything similar to that, and so that is one issue where this proposal doesn't really match up with some of the land use plans and things that are appropriate for the zoning district it's currently in, and also the neighborhoods that are nearby. The Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan classifies the site as G2 within the northern mainland geographic area, and the profile for the G2 transect emphasizes medium-density, single-family subdivisions, and neighborhood office and commercial mixed use, including beach tourism, supporting businesses. Excuse me. And the proposed plan is not consistent with the policies of the plan, including land use goal one, which encourages development to occur at densities appropriate for their location, and consider factors, including but not limited to environmentally suitable areas, suitable soils, adequate infrastructure, the type and capacity of sewage treatment available to the site, the adequacy of transportation facilities providing access to the site, and compatibility and proximity of the site to existing and planned county services. Also, land use goal two, which says to carefully consider the design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses, to mitigate compatibility issues such as environmental quality, safety, overburdening local infrastructure, scale, use, design, location, and adverse effects. Also, land use policy 2.2, continue to prohibit incompatible or poorly planned commercial encroachment near residential areas. Environment goal one, to preserve and protect the county's environmentally significant and sensitive lands and surrounding areas. Environment policy 1.1, to preserve coastal and noncoastal wetlands and riparian buffers for their natural resilience benefits. So, as I was showing you before, and related to the policies that I just went over, there are considerable amount of wetlands present. There are some, there's a drainage ditch that runs through the, it's a major drainage feature called the Denby Ditch that runs through the site. There's also another drainage feature that comes from across the road. It is in close proximity to two major subdivisions, and the proposed type of development is really not compatible with a neighborhood. So, staff recommends denial of the requested conditional zoning map amendment because it is not in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one, land use goal two, land use policy 2.2, environmental goal one, and environmental policy 1.1. And I'll leave you with the zoning map amendment review standards and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from the board?
And I'd like to add, sorry, I'd like to add the fact that at the community meeting that the overarching concern was stormwater, drainage, and flooding. If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer.
That kind of runs right through it, correct? The stormwater, the parking lot and everything runs right through that?
Yeah. Well, there may be one in the back and one that comes through the middle, if I remember correctly. But they were proposing fill, so it'd be up on some fill the development would be.
But that water would be displaced somewhere else?
It could. Then we'll open it up. Anyone who has signed up to speak relative to the proposal?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stuart Ennis. I'm the agent representative for the project before you tonight. My office is located at 113 Baxter Lane in Moayak. Couple things I'm going to start off with. The description of it being contractor warehouses was a discussion point that came out. We'll address that more. I'll address that more. It's not solely contractor work type of spaces, but I would like to start off with Mr. Chairman and vice chair and members of staff and board members. This is a project which I'm very excited about in the sense that there is a desperate need for commercial space in Moayak, particularly from Moayak to Barco in that corridor. This type of project offers, this building would offer flex space, which I would suggest doesn't pigeonhole it into one particular type of space. It provides the opportunity if somebody wants to have a small office, if a contractor, if it was a contractor, wanted to have a small space for themselves, a bookkeeper, an admin assistant, or something like that, and a portion of their space in the back of their building for storage, parking a vehicle, locking up their tools, things like that, so be it. It would also allow the opportunity to have the entire unit finished out into what would be essentially a Class A-type office. So, it could be that, anything in between, primarily focused on our business community. I'm currently in this business, providing space. I do provide several other buildings up in Moayak. I work with everything from churches to State Farm Insurance. I have people that have flex space, all the way up to all Class A space. The need for office space is desperate. I mean, I know Ms. Kraus is here, she's not on behalf of the chamber, but I would suggest that the chamber, I'm not going to speak for them, but I have been told from the chamber that there is a tremendous need for this. We have a shortage of it, and we're looking to provide it. This being a business, currently it's zoned, single-family. All we've heard about is changing, you know, we don't want more rooftops, and we hear it in the community, I've heard it at these meetings, no more rooftops, we want businesses. Well, it's currently zoned, single-family residential, and if you look at the aerial map, and Mr. Literal, could you please put that map back up, that zoning map, please?
I could.
Thank you, sir. Looking at this map, if there was an issue or a concern, somebody say, well, it's spot zoning, or it's not appropriate zoning, I would respectfully vehemently disagree with that. There's four corners. Three of the four are general business. That's what we're looking to do. One of the other things that we're looking to do with that property is, I hear about the drainage, I've been told about the drainage. The one thing I haven't been told by anybody that had a concern is that they're a licensed engineer, or that they're a licensed soil scientist. It's just been conjecture and opinion, not based on fact and not based on science. I've hired an engineering firm, a very respected firm here in the county, who does work all over, and their focus is drainage, proper drainage, maintaining drainage, and soil science. They have licenses that they stand behind, and they have guaranteed and assured us that it's going to work fine. As a matter of fact, if I were to, or if anyone were to simply just neglect the property, as it has been for the last umpteen years, or if they were to build houses, there's really no safeguard at that point about drainage, and so maybe it would be an issue at that point. Doing a project like this, the complete opposite is true. I'm not going to be held to one standard of rules for drainage. I'm not going to be held to two standards. I'm actually going to be held to three standards. The county UDO has rules about drainage, which I will have to abide by. The state of North Carolina has rules about drainage, which I will have to abide by, and the United States federal government has rules about drainage, which we will have to abide by. Three layers. We will be able to maintain our water. It's actually a better project. If somebody was genuinely concerned about drainage or flooding, they would want this to happen, because we're addressing the issue that is currently there. We're fixing it by doing this project. I've heard comments about the traffic. Well, the design for the ingress and egress on the property was provided to us by NC DOT. So, again, I haven't heard anybody that has had an issue with the project explain that they're a licensed traffic engineer. I haven't heard that. All I've heard is conjecture and suggestions and facts. Having this from NC DOT provides a lot of, obviously, you know, a lot of insurance, if you will, that it is the best design for the property and the safest design, and it is at a stoplight. Water is available to the property. Suitable soils for septic are on the property. We've already had the Army Corps look at the property. All the safeguards have been done with this property to ensure that it's a good and viable project. Right now, it's a derelict piece of land. It does nothing. If you build houses, you're going to put minimal tax resources into the county. You're going to put kids in schools, and again, the argument, we don't want any more rooftops, we want businesses. It's exactly what we're looking to do. Businesses only put into the county. As far as an economic point, it's the best thing for the property. Our traffic right now on our two other buildings for the same type of space that I'm doing in Moayak, literally about seven to eight cars a day, minimal traffic. I also have been speaking with our Soil and Water Board senior resident, if you will, Mr. West, and addressed this with him. I assured him we would be good neighbors and we wouldn't cause any problems, and I won't speak for him, but he didn't have any objection at that point, and I haven't seen him here tonight to raise any issues or concerns. As far as the homes behind it, it's a three-and-a-half acre parcel. It is quite a large parcel of property. There's a very large, going to be natural barrier behind the property, behind the development, proposed development, and all the houses. They won't be able to see it. Also, lastly, this idea or this concern about, you know, if they get this rezoning, they'll just put up whatever building they want. That's absolutely not the case. If you've been involved with any building in the county in the last many years, you will know that the planning department, Mr. Literal will tell you, has very strict and stringent standards on the type of buildings that can be built, up to and including telling you what sort of facade you can have on the building, height restrictions, what you can and can't do with the building. So, it's not, it's just simply, well, you get the zoning and go do what you want. That's simply not the case. You will have to go back through, and being a special use permit, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Literal, but being a special use permit, everything, assuming it were a successful rezoning, still has to go before the county and the UDO process and planning to ensure that what would be put there complies with any and all rules. Is that a correct statement?
You would be subject to the general business development standards, yep.
Which, dealing with, I understand, I mean, firsthand, are very stringent, and they, I mean, it is what it is. So, again, it's not carte blanche opportunities to go do what you want with the property. Everything has to be safeguarded. We're looking to improve the property vastly. We're looking to provide a tax base on the property, which has not existed ever on the property. We're looking to maintain our water. We're looking to actually clean up that ditch and make it better. Mr. Roberts, again, I'm not speaking for him, he can speak for himself, but he literally lives across the street. He is the head of our drainage committee here in the county. So, we would be working very closely with him to ensure that any and all questions or concerns that he had would be met and addressed accordingly. So, I'm going to remain on, I'll be here tonight if there's any questions for me, but I'm sure there may be some other questions you may have, so I'll hang out and...
I just want to add something to what he said, just to clarify, that there would be no special use permit required for this development. It would not come back before a board. If he gets the rezoning approved, then it would just be a major site plan application, which is an administrative approval in the planning department.
So, I misspoke, and I apologize, but what I meant was, I still have to come back before planning with the development plan and the building designs.
Correct.
Okay. Understood. That, I apologize.
I just wanted to clarify.
Well, I'm glad you did. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any for me right now as the applicant. If not, I also want to point out, I have a soil scientist here with me tonight, licensed soil scientist. I also have a licensed professional engineer here tonight to address any and all questions on the technical side.
Any questions for Mr. Ennis?
Mr. Ennis, I do appreciate that you do bring, you know, you do provide business and space, and I agree that you do, you do need it.
When I see the FEMA flood hazard map, I do have a concern, and a majority of that property lies right there, and I don't know how you, you know, you would plan at this place, that. That is, the floodiness is a big concern as we do get more water. But I do say that I do appreciate that you are a good business owner here. You do, you do have very nice properties. Another concern is to know before that this would go, go be approved, would really truly know what was going there, and that's hard, because if conditions change, you'll have that approval to, you know...
Can I ask you a question? What would you envision as being a problem? I'm just curious.
The drainage. The drainage.
No, no, the type of businesses. The drainage is manageable with the engineering and site work. That's the easy part. I'm talking about businesses. We, I would be more than happy to work with the county and the planning staff and the commissioners about what type of businesses. I heard somebody say, you're going to put a 7-Eleven there. It's not, no, I'm not. There's not going to be a 7-Eleven there. As far as the drainage and the flood zone, at the end of the day, we are not displacing water. I would face civil penalties and up to including criminal penalties for violating those rules. I'm not going to do that. I've got a reputation in the community, I'm a good business owner, respected business owner, as you said, and I appreciate you saying that, but I'm not going to do anything that jeopardizes myself, my business, or my civil liberties. That's not going to happen.
Has there been a traffic study done?
NC DOT provided the ingress and egress. But, you know, I'm glad you said that, Ms. Kraus, if I may, I'm going to bring this up. I heard somebody else say, there was a terrible accident there at one time, a terrible accident. I don't doubt there was. I look back, and I would challenge anybody to look back and find any part of the community where we haven't had an accident, and they're unfortunate, and it's not good. However, the accident that I keep hearing about, this terrible accident, the part of the story that they don't tell you is that the person that was driving that car was inebriated and was arrested that night, charged and convicted of DWI. So, I don't think it's reasonable to set a standard of road safety based on those conditions.
But was there, was there any kind of study or just DOT's?
DOT came forward, I went through the process with DOT to get the design of this. They provided their rules and everything. This is DOT-approved.
Was that through a driveway permit application?
Well, the driveway permit application, my understanding is going to be a rather simple process of just, because the DOT cannot keep you off your property, as I know you know.
Right.
So, this is, this literally came from Caitlin Spear. This was the direction she provided.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
No, it's, it's absolutely accessible.
Could you give us, from your engineers, a kind of a technical briefing of how you would manage this water, you know, the runoff area?
Yeah, I know, obviously, I'm going to defer to Mr. Strater, if I may. He's the engineer on the project, if he's more gracious enough to speak to it.
My name is Michael Strater. I'm an engineer with Quai-Bone Associates, civil engineer of record for the project. So, in a nutshell, I mean, as the owner has stated, so this project would be held to multiple standards. One of them would be the NCDQs, the state stormwater standards, but we've also got the Currituck County stormwater standards, and then there's also another layer in this regard with respect to FEMA. So, yes, there will be impacts to wetlands, and yes, there would be some filling of the site, but it would be in such a way that the post-developed runoff from that five-year rainfall event would be routed back to that two-year predeveloped wooded, you know, that condition, and really, there wouldn't be any runoff that would leave that, from the proposed improvement area. With respect to maintaining drainage conveyance, the main Denby ditch, that's running, if you're looking at that PDF, it's running along the back of the site. It's not running through the proposed development area. From the main intersection of Tolls Creek Road and Keratoke Highway, there is a spur that runs from the opposite quadrant of the intersection, and it does run through the project development area, and the project does propose, and we would be willing to accept a condition or offer a condition, that we would maintain adequate drainage, you know, at a minimum meeting all the other upstream and downstream culvert conveyances, and it would, it would be maintained free and clear, whereas right now, as you know, I mean, it is a vacant parcel that no one's maintaining any of the drainage. I mean, I don't know if that answers your question yet.
Yeah, it does somewhat, but obviously, you're going to be putting parking lots and impervious material in there, so you'll be adding to the complexity of that. So, it's not just a matter of the commercial building, I mean, you're picking up the amount of runoff a good bit because of taking away the permeable area that's currently there. I presume it's permeable now. It's just soil?
Sure, and obviously, what you do need to recognize though is currently, there is no stormwater management. Yes, there are wetlands around there, but we would also be developing the upland portion of the development, and all the runoff generated from that proposed impervious area would certainly be managed, and will take into consideration, you know, what the soils are, what the permeability is, that all go into effect when we're designing those actual stormwater control measures. And no, that hasn't all been designed yet. Yes, there is conceptual layout so that you have something to go by, but, and that doesn't rule out that there may not, you know, I don't know that the soils were supported here, but if there may be permeable pavement systems or, you know, stormwater chambers, but my first hunch is that we would use other stormwater control measures in this instance.
Has there been a study? I mean, I hear you saying that you've already looked at this property. Has there been some type of at least basic engineering as to how it would be handled?
Absolutely, basic engineering, and we've done, we've looked at the drainage areas, what the rainfall events are to at least, and these are probably conservatively sized outlines of the stormwater measures, but no, we haven't designed the actual stormwater control measures. We would end up showing cross-sections and all sorts of other information, and that obviously gets reviewed thoroughly by TRC, but also the state, and in this case FEMA as well.
We've had some pretty good rain so far. Have you been out there after some of these rains to see what's going on?
Yeah, well, we can speak to that.
Thank you all. Good evening. I'm Brian Rubino. I work with Mike at Quai-Bone Associates, and so I'm a licensed geologist and environmental scientist. So, the first thing we did on the property was a wetland delineation, and we did a transect of borings in uplands and wetlands to determine infiltration rates in the upland areas and also in the wetland areas that were proposing to be filled. And we also looked at the flood zones, of course, and it's already been mapped by FEMA, and that map shows a good depiction of exactly what the mapped FEMA soil types are out there, or, sorry, mapped flood zones. And so, that AE flood zone, the two colors, the blue and the yellow, on that particular map, we have a lot of different projects and jobs that we work on that are entirely... that we work on that are entirely, entirely in the AE, so an AE zone is not a floodway. Do, do AE areas flood on occasion? Yes, because that means they're below the 100-year flood elevation, so we've, we've looked at that. The upland soils on the property are good, are a good sandy soil type, so there are good infiltration rates, any imported sand is going to be, is going to be sand, it's going to be a clean, you know, sand that has a good infiltration properties to it, and so Mike and our engineer staff have preliminary, as shown on the site plan, laid out infiltration and collection basins, and so we're going to collect all stormwater that is generated from the developed areas on the property and direct those to the infiltration or wet pond basins, and that'll be done to not only the county standards, but also the state standards, so in association with all the other county, various county permits we need to get, we need to get a state stormwater permit, we need to get an Army Corps of Engineers permit for the wetland impacts, and also for the stream crossings, so that ditch that we were talking about, which is a tributary to Denby ditch, it's not the true Denby, but it is a offshoot there, exactly, right there, we're proposing a culvert, and that culvert size, size is going to be equal to or greater than the culverts that are both downstream and upstream, so we've looked at those, surveyed in those culverts as well, and we know, you know, being adjacent to the Currituck Sound or very close to it, you know, are, some folks ask, which way is water draining? So typically, when you have normal precipitation rates and the sound levels are at normal or near normal, drainage is going to go out towards the sound, but that's, we found that that's not always the case, you know, we have big, we're a wind tide-generated system, so when the, when the wind tides are up, we may get water pushing in at us, so these culverts are going to be essentially flat, they're going to, they're going to match or be bigger than the adjacent culverts upstream and downstream, so if we looked, looked at a lot of this, what we haven't done is apply for the state stormwater permit yet, because the first step is really the conditional rezone, is that, is that going to be a reality for us or not? We're going to get Army Corps permits, we're going to get Divisional Water Resource, what they call a 401 water quality certification, and then the dimmer permits with, with stormwater, you know, and, and, in combination with all the other permits, the DOT permits that we talked about already, and, and erosion control permits, so we've looked at it pretty comprehensively already, even though we haven't submitted a site plan to the state or the county yet, because that tends to be the, the next step after the conditional rezone.
Interesting, it seems like cards before the horse on that, you would think the conditional rezone would be after those studies, but, you know, you would like to kind of have them in hand to make in the decision, but.
There's, there is like a consistency issue when you apply for the, the state stormwater permits, they have to make sure that a, that a project is consistent with the zoning, so currently, it's not, so that's why we're, we need to make sure we're conditionally rezoned first. Thank you, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant or his agents? All right, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Barnes, and I live at 2515 Tolles Creek Road, and if you'll pull up that zoning map. I am, that entire back part backs up to my property, and I have three major concerns, the first being the water, so I actually have video, I actually go down there every time it rains, that creek runs through my entire property, not just the front of my property, but the side of my property and goes all the way to the sound, so if we have a little bit of a rain, my creek fills completely up and it's mud, if we have a big rain, I get very nervous because that water almost comes on to the prop, all the way to the property, and I own 22 acres, and almost, what would you say? Fifteen of those acres are the creek, and as for that, the property being abandoned, this past year, they actually, the city, got a grant to come clean up the creek, including the property that he owns, so that the water flows better, and when we have big rains, you never know what direction the water's going to flow, sometimes it'll go one direction, sometimes it goes a different direction, my biggest concern is if you dam up that section, I'm already, when we have big rains, I mean, that water already comes all the way up to the, you know, creeps into my property a lot, now if we dam up one section, now what's going to happen? And like I said, I have video, even just a light rain, the creek gets full, a heavy rain, it's, it's, gets a little nerve-wracking, if we had, I mean, heaven forbid, you know, a tornado or hurricane, something big come through, we're, we're going to be underwater, I mean, point blank. So that's my first concern, the second concern is the traffic.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Your first concern, when you refer to dam up, what are you referring to?
When he puts in the cement and all the, the buildings there, that's a big portion, that's where that water comes from the sound, through the creek, it goes through that three, I mean, that entire three acre, if you pull up that map again, that is a huge section of where that water goes, and then it goes underneath the freeway, and it keeps going, so you dam up one section, which, I mean, y'all can go talk to Soil and, and then they, I mean, they paid for a grant this past year to come, and they started across the street, they cleaned up all the, all the creek and through that property and through my property, and then through River's Edge property, cleaning the creek so that, because one section, if one section dams, the entire section floods, and so my biggest concern is now you're going to dam up this one, and now that water, where is it going to go? It's going to go on my property, it's going to go on River's Edge, and heaven forbid we get a really bad storm, that water, it's, it's going to flood us, period.
Okay, I think it's safe to say that they wouldn't be allowed to dam it up, I don't think that would be permissible, and there was study, the studies are going to have to happen officially after a rezoning, they're only going for a rezoning right now, but if it failed to meet what any of the three requirements, federal, state, or county, for handling water or stormwater runoff, they, essentially, it would fail the project of, of commercial, so I think at this point, they're just trying to get the, if I'm correct, the zoning changed so that they, but then they have a lot of hoops to jump through after that, but I, I really see your point there on.
I agree with your point, the cart, the horse before the cart, you know, because shouldn't we have that before we let them rezone and change everything?
Exactly.
That should be done way before that, we should know what, what's going to happen before we rezone and say, oh yeah, go ahead, and then all the properties, that's a lot of properties, that's two subdivisions and me, that's a lot, too.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, you were getting ready to go on point two.
No problem, no problem, so that's point one. Point two is, when I bought the property, I bought the property because there was no buildings around it, there was no commercial, it was residential properties on both sides of me and me, that's why I bought it, so I'm not in approval of putting a business there, and, I mean, really, brick and mortar, brick and mortar buildings are not the thing that we need because everybody's online, so I really don't see that to be, it's not why I bought the property, so I'm not in agreement of changing it, because I specifically bought my farm, 22 acres there, because I could farm, I could, I could do things, and I didn't have to look at a building right in front of my property, period.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
Is there currently a buffer between your property and this property?
No, no, I would see every single thing. I would see, I would see his, because back behind it, he's planning on putting a parking lot, I would see that, matter of fact, his proposal also puts a sewer, all of his sewer septic, all everything, right in front of my property, so when I drive in, not only do I get to, and I don't mind it, I see the water tower, I'm the black gate right next to the water tower, so when I drive in, I see the water tower, and then his proposal is to put the septic right behind the water tower, so now I get to look at that, and then I get to look at septic, then I get to watch and look at all his proposed cars parked there, I get to see the cement parking lot, and I get to see a building, whereas right now, I see trees and birds and animals and a, and a beautiful creek, that's what I get to see, and that's why I bought the property, because that's what I saw, I did not buy the property, if I wanted to see a building, I would have bought somewhere else, so that's very hard, I just don't agree with that. And thirdly, as far as the traffic goes, no, I'm not a traffic person, but I live there, I go in and out of that property all day long, he's proposing it to have the out on Tolles Creek, literally, I could walk to it from my driveway, and the traffic right there is horrendous, it's horrible, to the fact that when I take my son, we have to go out there to take my son to the bus every day, because I don't want him standing out there by the bus, because we have some crazy drivers that take that turn, and they don't look, they just keep driving, and as a matter of fact, when the bus comes, not so much this year, but last year, very much so, I would have to, before I let my son cross the street to get to the school bus, I would pull out my car to make sure they didn't come, because they run the school bus's stop sign every time, they comply around that corner, run the school stop sign, and keep going, and as a matter of fact, on the way here, I guess there's some police conference, because I couldn't get out of my driveway, so there were police cars all the way down the street, and I couldn't get out, and I sat there forever thinking I was going to get, be late to get here, so the traffic is already there, I know he's proposing seven or eight cars a day, but even seven or eight cars a day coming back and forth and back and forth through the property will add even more traffic there, and it's not a safe, safe place where he's proposing to put that driveway, because that's the turn, when you go to turn from Tol, go on to Tolles Creek, that's where the turn is, and you're literally turning, and he's proposing to put a driveway right there, where that's the in and out of the driveway, so it, it's not a good place, and that's, I'm, I have a master's degree, I have all this stuff, I can sit here and say all my credentials as well, but I'm there every day, several times a day, I see the traffic, I see the water, I see all the things that I, I talked about today, I see it every day, multiple times a day, every day. So, there you go, thank you for your time.
Any questions for Ms. Barnes? Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up to speak on this matter?
Yes, my name is James Dempsey, and I live at 210 Mariners Way in the River's Edge section, I walked the property, just on the outside on Sunday, just to take a look at exactly what was going on over there, and as I was walking, I could look into the woods from the property, and it looked like there was a retention pond in there, or at least something that has developed into a retention pond, it was a, a pretty substantial amount of body of water over there, and I can imagine that what that body of water does is when it rains, as the, the water flows in, it gets, it's going to get into that, and it sort of mitigates itself, causing a slow process to get into the wetlands. If this building is built, that retention area will obviously go away, they will have a concrete or asphalt parking area, and as I understand it, the building will be below road level, so now you have a parking area, so when it rains, all that water's going to hit that, and it's just going to rush unabated right into the wetlands area, and we're concerned, as residents over there, we're concerned about it, because we boarded that wetlands area. The other thing to consider is, as the previous speaker said about the Tolles Creek Road exit, I walked that exit, and if you see the water tower, and then you say, okay, the, the exit's going to be right about here, I was standing there, watching the cars come in and exiting onto it, and you will have about two to four seconds to make up your mind whether you're going to be able to slam on brakes or hit something that's coming out of that exit. If you would take the time to drive and, and make that right-hand turn when you leave, you will see a sign up there immediately that says, no littering, that is about where that exit is going to be, and you're not going to have a lot of time, it's a blind turn, people will do anywhere from 25 to 35 miles an hour coming around that thing, and they are not going to have an opportunity to put on brakes if somebody comes running out that way. The other side, if you're, if you're trying to leave and there are three or four, from, from the building, if there are three or four cars there ready to make a left-hand turn, you're not getting out, so the alternative would be to turn right, go down to our community, come in, make a U-turn, come back out, and then go right back out to the highway, because nobody's going to want to get onto Tolles Creek and follow it all the way around, so it's just a, an accident waiting to happen, and I think that is one major concern that I have, is that one exit. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer those.
No questions, thank you, Mr. Dempsey.
Thank you.
This time, we'll have it open for discussion by the board.
Mr. Chairman, may I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just wondered, just a couple things, only because some points were raised afterwards, and if I may, and respectfully to the board, we heard again, the water's the main issue, we're fixing it, it might be a problem right now, we're fixing it, as far as the depression that this gentleman just talked about, it's literally the size of this, here in front of you, this space, and it, so anyways, it's a, thanks, it's a small area, and that area is not a depression in the earth, that area was actually where the DOT helped themselves to sand a number of years ago and took it out, we're actually looking to fix it, again, that might be causing part of the problem with the water, we're looking to fix it, so that body of water is not, it's not a natural depression, it was created by the DOT, the traffic, we had four deaths in Moayak last year, four, two of them were right in front of Food Lion, nobody brought up any issues about traffic being an issue there, it's stoplights, it's two lanes of highway in each direction, it doesn't seem to be an issue, no one brings up an issue then when it happens there, and as far as what people have to look at when driving by, we're going to be, we're going to be forced by UDO and Development Orchesters to create buffers, and as Mr. Rubino pointed out just a moment ago, I'm, I'm not sure what some of the speakers are referencing, or A speakers referencing, there is literally unbelievably thick natural shrubbery and growth around the property, and we're going to have to put in additional screening to comply with UDO standards and to comply with their county rules and regulations, so I'm not sure where that's coming from, but again, just to hit it on, the, the traffic, designed by DOT, NC DOT, water, we're fixing it, we're making it better, and as far as screening, the UDO provides types of plants, all the way down to the types and the height of bushes and trees, types of trees that you have to use for screening purposes, it will be addressed accordingly and done correctly, and I appreciate you letting me come back up, thank you, sir.
I'd like to bring up a point that he just brought up in your first, Mr. Ennis, your first, you asked him to bring up the map, and he said, three of the four corners.
If you would come up to a, give your name and the.
I didn't want to speak, but I did want to respond to his, now he says, three of the four corners are already zoned.
Yeah, like your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Steve Metcalf, I live in 124 Mariners Way in River's Edge, but to, to his first point where he said, three of the four corners were part of commercial zone property, and this would just be a fourth corner, but actually, he's looking on the other side of Tolles Creek Road, there's no commercial property between the two residents of Currituck on the Sound and River's Edge Community, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, there, there's not, it's not like, oh, there's just one corner that didn't get included, and the other point being, there is a need, and I have talked to the Chamber of Commerce, and I know that there's some conflict there between the board member and, and the chamber, but I also know that there are other properties available, and none are between residential areas, so I just wanted to make that point as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
All right, we will close that portion of the meeting, any discussion by the board. If not, we will entertain a motion. If not, we will entertain a motion.
Can I ask the county something real quick?
Sure.
So if this, which again, it drives me crazy that you have to go through the zoning change to get the data you need to know whether they can legitimately handle the water. It's kind of a really precarious situation. The only other way they could have done this was to do all these studies on their own, and go for this zoning, and have all that ammunition here, which would have been quite costly. Is there a possibility that they would fail to meet the water runoff standards, both, all of them, federal, any one of them, federal, state, or county, and then not be able to build there? Is that, there that possibility even after zoning?
I don't have the expertise to answer that question for you.
Okay.
I just don't.
So if it fails in a category to be able to mitigate this water situation, you would think that that's kind of a slam dunk. No, you can't build. And now you've gone through that stage, you've gone through the stage of getting the, or getting the zoning change, and gone through an engineering study, and you're still back to square one. You can't put anything up.
I would wager a guess that they can figure out a way to make the stormwater work. Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, please, please do.
Speaking with Mr. Ennis, and he would be, he would be, he would allow a condition in this conditional rezoning that would require that we have a proper stormwater management plan approved by the county and the state, if that helps in any way. And this site, you know, more than half of the site is wooded, undeveloped lands that won't be developed. And so those could even be, there could be protection statements associated with that as well.
So is there a possibility of denial? You get into this, you get your, you get your change, and you go to work now, and you start doing all your studies, and how you're gonna mitigate this and handle this, and you submit them. And it were to fail in some area, I mean, I don't understand. Can you still put a building up even if it's failed? I mean, or do you have to radically change until you can adapt to what will work? It seems like an awful big gamble to me, because the water is a big issue. And you really, I heard about conjecture on the front side, but there's really nothing solid put up in front of me of how it's going to be handled. I get it, that good engineers, they'll figure stuff out, but I hear from some of the homeowners and property owners there that, you know, talking about that they're at a peak point right now in handling this water. So it's just a tough situation right now.
Just like that depression that was mentioned, that's holding water right now. That's basically what our stormwater system, it's not gonna be, you know, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel with that either. So we're trying to almost mimic what that, what that maybe, that depression does now. So we're gonna have infiltration or wet pond basins. And as Mike was talking about, if we needed to, we could supplement that with some pervious pavement media to get that stormwater to these basins. So we feel very confident, but we've, you know, the development of the site, it's not very dense compared to many projects that we've worked on. And so we're very confident we'll be able to get not only a state, but a county stormwater permit. And, you know, having that as a condition is certainly acceptable, because we're very confident in that.
What is the percentage of proposed non-pervious area right now? And presuming you can go ahead and handle creating runoff points that were not runoff points now, you'd have to create some. So what is the percentage right now that you're applying for, for, or proposing, I should say?
Less than 20%. I didn't memorize that. Mike pulled that from our site plan. So less than 20% is impervious.
Thank you. So you have to adapt by taking areas that are not flooding right now on that same property. What percentage is left that is not flooding? In other words, you saw standing water. What areas?
Sure. So that area that's, that someone said they saw standing water the other day, that's probably less than a thousand square feet. And so other than that, the only places that are flooded right now every day are the ditches, and those aren't even flooded every day. And the flood zone map, that FEMA map that we were looking at, those areas are not flooded every day. And that Denby ditch, we're not touching that. That basically straddles the eastern property line. So the main Denby ditch is not gonna have any piping in it proposed at all. It's just the offshoot of that is what we're proposing to put a culvert in, in a section only. And that culvert's gonna match upstream and downstream. And Mr. Ennis is, says he would maintain the rest of the ditch, meaning he'd clean out any debris, just like the county did recently through their grants. Any of the rest of that ditch that's on his property, he'll maintain that, pull out any debris and snags, because that's what the county's been doing, and that's a great thing. We see all that stuff pulled out of these, these ditches or natural creeks, and it helps drainage tremendously. And so the, and the only wetlands that would be impacted, you know, those wetlands, you could generally, on a normal day, you could walk on those wetlands. And a lot of the tree area, the wooded areas in the back, doesn't necessarily look like wetlands until you dig a hole. And the Army Corps says it's a wetland if the water table, the normal water table's within 12 inches of the surface. So you can walk over the majority of that site most days, most days of the year.
Thank you.
I have video. You can't even walk on that right now. Your shoes would be stuck in the mud. It ain't no little bitty puddle. That entire place is filled with water, filled. All the way up to my driveway, filled. That creek is filled. You try to walk in it, your shoes will be stuck in the mud. It's not a little bitty ditch, it's not a little puddle, it's not any of those things. It is a wet land. Please pull up that thing again. That almost entire property is a wet land. It's not a puddle. It's not an indention. Your shoes will get stuck, I promise you. You can go walk it right now. Your shoes are gone.
I was referring to that.
All right, we are at a point of open for a motion.
I would like to just say, assuming that they can do the engineering and make the site work with the runoff and the state permits and all that, we still have to remember that there are land use plan inconsistencies with placing this type of a development near neighborhoods and in environmentally sensitive areas. And those are the land use policies that were highlighted in the staff report. If, if, I will go on to say, though, that if you, if you're entertaining an approval, that you can put conditions on, that's the point of a conditional rezoning, and you could do things like require retention of natural vegetative buffers that are already there. You could do something like limit the amount of lot covers that's allowed, which is normally 65% in general business. Just some ideas.
But that's not tonight, right?
Yeah.
It is tonight?
Yeah, we do that tonight.
Sir, can I say something, please, in response to the engineer and to Mr. Ennis? I did not sign up.
That's gonna be up to the chairman.
Very briefly.
This is, this is in reference to what I heard at the previous meeting that we had, the neighborhood meeting.
If you would come up, state your name, and very briefly.
Okay, if you'd leave.
Name and address.
Please, sir, I don't know your name.
Jason, what did you need?
Tony Long. I live at 105 Signet Court, Currituck, in Currituck on the Sound. The engineer here, and I don't remember his name, I mean, I have the utmost respect for the engineers and Mr. Ennis. I mean, he's a businessman, he's trying to do, you know, he's trying to earn money. He's trying to make money. I understand what he's saying about bringing tax revenue into the county. There was tax revenue paid on that property, even though Mr. Ennis didn't own it. I'm assuming the person paid the taxes on it. He implied that there was no tax money coming in off of that property before he purchased it. I think he was trying to say that it'd be, if he gets this building built, it'll be more tax money coming into the county. And I understand the need for tax money. But when they, when they, when they brought that up, there was another map, sir, showing the, yeah, this one. Okay. I addressed the wetlands, and they were, they're gonna fill a certain portion up here. It was a, it was a pit.
That's what we were talking about, yeah.
Right. There was a pit that was there, or that's what they, it was determined. Well, I think it was, wasn't it this year, earlier this year, that they changed the wetland laws? Was it this year? I knew you addressed that when they changed it.
Yeah.
Where that could be, see, previously, this was not even allowed to be filled, but they've changed the law. So now, they can.
Go ahead, go ahead. Okay. So you, so we're talking about that same pit that the DOT or someone dug out in the past to mine sand at one point in time. So that's the area that someone mentioned there's standing water today. And yes, we're proposing to fill that, and it's surrounded by wetlands entirely. In 2022, we could have gotten a permit to impact that area. Now, in 2024, 2023 came in, you don't have to get a permit for that. But the other areas, you do have to get your permit. So it's the same permit, and we could have gotten a permit for the whole thing. But with the current rules, you don't have to get a permit just for that area. That's just that hole that's surrounded by wetlands in the middle, or surrounded by uplands, walk around 100% of it. But we, before, we were looking at this site before that, and we were just gonna get a permit for that, as well as the rest of the areas. So that's, that's where we are.
Well, I just wanted to address that. There was a pit or something there. And previously, at least my understanding of it, was they could not fill it at that time. Now, Mike Doxy, when I bought my property, he told me that all of this was wetland, and it would never be developed. When they set out the plot, or the plat for, excuse me, for Currituck on the Sound, that was not included in that property, but the people that owned the land that was developed for Currituck on the Sound, as far as I know, own that same piece of property. Now, the other issue that I have is what the gentleman here said from the planning office about the incompatibility of it. I'm not gonna go into that, because already, people have already discussed that. The other issue I have is the traffic. And I'm not a traffic engineer, just like Mr. Ennis was talking about. I mean, you know, traffic engineers, they do studies, they determine what's right, what's wrong, and all that. So I'm not gonna address that, because I don't know how to address it. I do know from personal experience, living close to that intersection there, that several of the people that have voiced concerns about here have real concerns, because people drive crazy right there at that intersection. And that is right at that turn lane, where you turn onto Tolles Creek Road. And when you, you just better be looking out. But the issue that I have is the water. There's water back there all the time. And I'm sure that smart engineers can come up with some way of complying with that. I still don't think it's a good fix or a good place for that type of business there. But that's just my personal opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I just needed to remind the board that any conditions that are being placed on an approval have to be agreed upon by the applicant. So you might wanna.
Applicant.
Right.
Oh, good point. Okay. Is that prior to it or during the motion?
Yeah, you would need to make sure that they're gonna agree to whatever conditions you're putting on there before you make the motion.
There's, it brings up one last question here, hopefully the last question. Is the current proposed entrance from the highway or from the, from the road, can that be changed? Or, because right now, it sounds, where it's proposed is a very dangerous point. Is there a safe point in there? And why, why was it proposed where it is? Is that the only place it can go?
Yes, Mr. Ennis.
Thank you. That was designed by North Carolina DOT. I'm not being sarcastic in any way. The person that you would want designing ingress and egress, designed the ingress and egress. It was NC DOT. And I appreciate people's opinions, and there's just that. We are all entitled to them, and I appreciate their concerns. It's gonna be a good project. We're gonna take care of it. We're stewards of the land. It'll be a good building. It's in desperate need. It'll all be in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ennis, why couldn't the entrance and exit be off of Kerituck Highway?
That's what I was thinking, too.
That's a turn lane. That's a turn lane right there.
Well, they have the Currituck Courthouse just down the road. It's the same way.
And respectfully, sir, I don't, I'm gonna give you a very honest answer. I don't know. I was told, in order to design this, you need to speak with NC DOT, and that's what I did. And this was a process that took literally a year with them. Nothing happened overnight, I can assure you. So this is what they felt most comfortable with, and so that's what we went with. Yes, sir.
Thank you. At this point, we will consider a motion.
I would make a motion to approve, put on conditions. And so I'll move to approve PB 2333, Clooney LLC Conditional Rezoning, because the request is, by conjecture, in conformance with general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including insert, insert, I'm sorry, okay, this is the part where I'm going to put in, under the conditional portion that the water mitigation and handling of the water situation there be approved by both, the engineering of it, approved by federal, state, and county, and a visual buffer, again, approved by county, give a buffer for both residential and agricultural for what is being proposed commercially. And thirdly, that the DOT, which sounds like it's already in agreement, is in agreement with the engineering design for the entrance and exit of this property. And if you're okay with those conditions, we can go forward.
Mr. Hurley, you mentioned the retention, or the visual buffer. Is that the retention of natural vegetation?
It's whatever the county calls as a buffer is what I'm referring to. It's usually vegetation.
Would it not be better to create a, to ask for completely not disturbing buffer?
Existing, right.
Existing buffer, so not disturbing it.
I think Mr. Little had said that earlier, the retention of natural vegetation.
Okay, which is, brings it back to the county.
But wouldn't you have to, to put in the septic? I mean, isn't that going to have to disturb? You know, in a way, I'm having a hard time, because there's a part of me that says that that piece of property would, otherwise, it's, we need businesses. We do need that. But we have, and we've, we've done so much money to, to create a land use plan, to create a vision plan, and I have heartburn with the drainage and the traffic. And really, you know, we have input. I, I don't, I don't know. Huh?
We're gonna vote.
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, let's see what he agrees with it.
Has the motion finished?
Is that the extent of the motion? All right, we have a motion.
Three conditions are in there.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
This is to you.
Two to two. I think the, the, so the motion does not carry.
There is no two to two.
Just chair, just chair.
Now, the, the, the process is that it will still go before the commissioners.
Correct.
On the, at, at their next meeting.
I have a question, I just asked a question.
Yes.
May I?
We agree to the, the conditions, we'll take that to the commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, just one question, sorry. Harry, how many people live in Rivers Edge? Just a rough estimate, okay, this is Rivers Edge, but how many people in general live?
128 homes.
128, 128 homes in Rivers Edge, okay, the Sound, Keratuck on the Sound, how many are in there? How many roughly live in Keratuck on the Sound?
65.
Okay, so my question is, if I get every single one of them to sign a petition, would that make a difference? Because that's, that's three, that's 300 people.
Right, right now, right now, the status is it will move forward, the, the motion to approve did not carry. It's going to be brought before the commissioners, that's the status.
Perfect, but can I bring 300 people to that meeting, whether petition or that? Would that make a difference? Because that's how many people are affected by this. If, if that, and across the street, down the street, we're looking at probably 500, that's my, my goal to bring for that day.
No approval here tonight, other than.
I know, I'm just saying, I just wanna know how, how that works, that was my question, sorry, thank you.
Process is it will go, go, the next step will be before the commissioners. All right, that concludes the first item on the agenda. We will allow Mr. Bass and Mr. Ennis to return for the remaining items.
Breaks my heart.
Two to two.
All right, so we have.
He's got that just.
Yeah.
To get all of that.
Yes. And yes. Very hard. It was one of the hardest posts I've taken.
That was tough.
And I don't know, I have to go on my conscience, why do we have a land use plan? Why do we have, why do we have the Imagine Keratuck, why do we do that?
It's conditional use, that's what he's asking for, and there was three strong conditions.
No, I'm fine, I, I think you're all right. I had to reiterate. I, I feel like I'm in a position, chamber was broken, I'm kind of offended that. It puts me personally, I'm here on a personal.
Moving on.
Oh my gosh, that was tough, you dodged out on a good one.
You, you got the, we got the part about the conditions actually is maintaining the original.
But that doesn't really matter now.
It doesn't matter.
No, there was something else about passing the city-state federal.
That motion doesn't really matter, I don't think.
It didn't pass.
I think it did say.
Didn't pass.
It should be, because otherwise, it, it's gonna be years, if ever, before it gets fully screened, the way the ordinance is written.
It was a tie, so it didn't pass.
But, but it's just gonna go forward now as if you recommend a denial as a board. So any of that stuff that you said as conditions is not gonna make it, make its way to the Board of Commissioners. Yeah. Also, for future reference, um, in general, when you're making conditional approvals, you would want those conditions to be more restrictive than the ordinance already is. So you're adding something additional to the approval.
Does the current ordinance require federal, state, and county?
You have to get all the state permits that are required if you're triggering them. Stormwater, soil and erosion control, DOT driveway permits, et cetera.
Okay, moving on to new business. Case PB 24-11, Carolina Designs Realty, Inc. The applicant, Carolina Designs Realty, Inc., submitted a text amendment, application to amend the UDO chapters four, five, and 10 to aset, establish a new property management offices and operation used to be permitted in the general business, village center, light industrial, heavy industrial, planned development mixed, and planned development outer bank zoning districts with a zoning permit subject to specific standards. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Carolina Designs Realty has submitted a text amendment, basically to just establish a new use in the ordinance that really better fits how they operate. And we have a lot of these companies here in the county, in particular over the beach, some on the mainland as well. And the way the ordinance is written currently, you, you can certainly have an office, but it would limit your, um, storage areas or any other type of, um, uses that are not offices. And so the intent here is to provide a whole new use that has a set of specific standards controlling it. That basically allows a larger area of their use, the building itself, to be used for non-office type things, for example. They are generally doing some sort of linen service where they are getting linens delivered, they will sort those and bag them up for each house and then deliver those to the house to be, uh, put on the beds and so forth. So they need kind of a larger area for that, as well as some other storage. So that's the general idea behind adding this new use, and it is going in the industrial uses, uh, category, but it will be allowed in general business with a zoning permit, which is just a site plan approval. If somebody comes in to create a new building, it would just go through the major site plan process. It would also be allowed in village centers, light and heavy industrial. And you can see here in section 4.2.5B6 that we have, um, referenced a set of specific standards that go along with the use. And I'll go through those briefly. The property management offices and operations shall meet all applicable requirements for the zoning district in which they are located, including but not limited to non-residential design standards. Of course, if you, if somebody was proposing one of these in an industrial zone, those, uh, projects would be exempt from design standards because they don't apply in industrial zones. This is just to clarify that you would basically have to meet the design standards for the building in general business. The office portion of the use, including any break rooms, conference rooms, restrooms, and any offices that may be disconnected from the main office area, and what I mean by that is that, um, they have, this particular, um, business has an office area, and then they have a, a central area where they do the linens and cleaning supplies and that sort of thing. And then there's another storage area on the end. In that central part, there are some offices, um, open offices. So just clarifying here that those can count as office space. And the reason I say that is because we have limited, or we have said that at least 30% of the entire building would be office area. Just wanted to clarify that, that, that the offices that are not connected can be included in that 30%. And then C says that operations included, including an in-house laundry facility for cleaning of linens shall be considered a laundry plant. So you can't really have a, a large laundry operation in this particular use category. That would be an industrial use, a laundry, laundry plant, similar to what Brinley Beach built in the, uh, industrial park that the county owns recently. All right, any questions so far? Okay. Here we are establishing a parking standard, uh, one space for every 300 square feet of office. Um, and then it references that section here where it talks about what's included in the office space. So you would reference this and do your calculations for the office space at 1 to 300. And then the remaining areas would be one space for every thousand square feet. And here we are, uh, in the, in chapter 10, in the industrial services examples, we have added, uh, property management offices and operations to that list of examples for industrial service uses. And again, in chapter 10, we have added a definition. Uses primarily engaged in the supervision and administration of rental properties, including but not limited to marketing, reservations, revenue management, guest satisfaction, cleaning and maintenance, and linen services. The request is, um, consistent with the Keratuck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal three, to support new and existing commercial developments, and economic development goal one, support the retention and expansion of existing businesses and promote the development of new businesses. The staff recommends approval because the request is consistent with land use goal three and economic, economic development goal one. And I'll leave you with the review standards and answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions for staff? Hearing none, has anyone signed up to speak to this case?
Well, I'll just, um, I'm not signed up, but I'm the applicant.
That's fine, if you'll state your name and address.
I'm Monica Thibodeau, um, I live in, uh, 126 E-Hawk Drive in, in Duck, in Duck, North Carolina. So, but I've been in, um, business as Carolina Designs Realty since, um, well, bought into the bills, business in 1991. The business has been operational since 1988, and we've been in Harbinger since 2006. So we've, um, operated, uh, we manage over 100 properties in, uh, on the Keratuck Outer Banks, you know, in the Corolla area, and, uh, manage, uh, 350 homes from South Naxhead to, through Corolla. So we've been in business a long time, and the, uh, knowing that, um, that we, we, we purchased the property adjacent to our existing facility at 8760 Keratuck Highway, which is just a little past the Harley store on the right, heading, heading toward the beach. And, uh, we've operated there quite well, but, um, my, uh, we had an opportunity to purchase the adjacent property and, uh, thought that it might be a nice opportunity to improve our facility and make the working conditions a little nicer for employees. So that was our goal, and then investigating it over the last year or so, we realized that property management itself wasn't a listed use in the ordinance. So we've, uh, trying to rectify that situation because that is something that we do see down here, um, in this area. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I appreciate the, uh, the assistance from staff in, in helping to navigate this process.
Thank you, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, uh, the board can discuss between themselves at this time, if there's any discussion or any more questions of staff. Hearing none, I'm gonna entertain a motion for approval or denial.
I move to approve PB 24-11, Carolina Designs Text Amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Keratuck 2040 Vision Plan and the UDO, including land use goal three and economic development goal one.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, likewise, motion passes. Does anybody need a break up here, are y'all all doing okay?
Jason. I'll be okay though.
You, you can hang in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We're here for breaks normally.
Moving on to new business, item number three, PB 24-12, Jay Bender Text Amendment. The applicant, Jay Bender, submitted a text amendment, application to amend chapter three, zoning districts, chapter six, subdivision and infrastructure standards, chapter seven, environmental protection, and chapter 10, definitions and measurement to create a new development type, preservation subdivision in the single-family residential outer banks, remote zoning district. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, so this is a, the applicant is proposing a new development type, an option that is in, only located in the single-family remote zoning district, and that is very similar to the conservation subdivision, which is currently permitted in AG and SFM. This is specifically tailored, tailored to the off-road area of Corolla, which is majority-zoned SFR, if not all of it. The purpose is to minimize development footprint and preserve and restore wildlife habitat, including habitat for the Corolla Wild Banker horses. The preservation subdivision is a, will be applied to, or applicable to projects that are at least 25 acres in size, and the maximum density will be 0.33 dwelling units per acre. And the maximum, or minimum of 50% open space set aside as preservation areas, which we'll speak about in a moment, will be required. This is a map of the parcels that are 25 acres or greater in area, which what, which is what the subdivision can be applied to. We also had GIS create another map that shows parcels that are 15 acres or greater. Now, as I mentioned, this can apply to project areas of 25 acres or more, so that can relate multiple parcels that all equal up to 25 acres. Let me know when you'd like to move to the next line.
Okay.
And we can always come back. So the preservation subdivision will amend chapter three, the dimensional standards, and proposes similar density to the current density derived by the lot requirement of 120,000 square feet, as the wetlands will be excluded from the calculation. Minimum lot area for this subdivision, preservation subdivisions, will be a minimum of 30,000 square feet. Potential, potentially features that cannot be included in the minimum calculation that are outlined in chapter 10 will include KAMA and 401, 404 designated wetlands by the Army Corps, and public rights of way, and areas that are below mean water, which are all standard to all lots of minimum size. We can come back to this too, if you have any questions. The intent of the preservation subdivision and development plan is to understand the land proposed for development is to preserve natural features to the maximum extent practical. The minimum of 50% open space set aside is required and is referred to as the preservation areas. The preservation and development plan will identify primary preservation areas, which will count towards 50% minimum of the project, and the features listed on this slide will be prioritized for the preservation. The allowable uses are limited to wildlife habitat and safe passage of the Corolla Wild Banker horses. Primary preservation areas are required to be placed within a permanent conservation easement. And the secondary conservation, preservation area, sorry, will also be included in that 50% minimum open space set asides. And it will include these uses, which are featured on this slide as well. The allowable uses within the secondary preservation area will include wildlife habitat, stormwater management systems, required drainage or other minor utility easements, migration, mitigation of development activities, and active or passive recreational uses. So we have the two different primary and secondary preservation areas, which will be included to create the 50% minimum for your open space. This text amendment will also amend chapter six, section 6.5, as the fee in lieu of park area dedication is not required. The applicant does not want to encourage park features, which will attract more visitors and kind of go in contradiction of what this is the intent of. We will also be adding six new definitions to chapter 10. We have a definition that outlines what are Corolla Wild Banker horse? The wild horses of North Carolina's Currituck Outer Banks descended from the colonial Spanish mustangs, which have been designated as the North Carolina State Horse, also referred to as the Wild Banker horses. Corolla Wild horses are the Currituck Wild horses. The second definition is the Northern Currituck Wildlife Habitat Preservation Corridor. A north-to-south corridor of property located in the SFR District targeted for natural features and wildlife habitat, including Corolla Wild Banker horse habitat, a map of the corridor is adopted by the county's Wild Horse Advisory Board. The preservation area, which we outlined, is an open space set aside approved by part of the preservation subdivision for the purpose of preserving riparian buffers, wetlands, plant and wildlife habitats for local significance, maritime forests, local natural heritage areas, and wildlife corridors. Preservation areas are subject to the standards which we outlined in 6.7 of the preservation subdivision. We also outlined the definition of a preservation subdivision, a division of tract of land into two or more lots, building sites, or other divisions that set aside open space for preservation and restoration of wildlife in the Corolla Wild Banker horse habitat. Protection and preservation of natural features are created in accordance with the section 6.7 preservation subdivision. We also defined rewild, which is used in this preservation subdivision. A comprehensive conservation effort focused on preserving and/or restoring ecosystem health by reestablishing areas intended to act as wildlife corridor and to remain in a predominantly natural state. And the final new definition is Wild Horse Advisory Board, an advisory board established by the Currituck County Commissioners charged with the duty of providing guidelines and general management objectives of the wildlife or the Corolla Wild Banker horses. This text amendment is in conformity with the land use policies that are outlined specific to the off-road area. The transect of O1 reserved lands and reserved lands of O2 is the future land use policy transects. And the policy 1.1, it states, explore the feasibility of public private, public-private partnerships with land over, landowners and conservation agencies to acquire lots in the off-road area for conservation, open space preservation, and stormwater and public safety needs. And the second is that the dwelling units per acre for the land use plan is consistent with this adopted subdivision text amendment, as it is one dwelling unit per three acres, which equals to .33 dwelling units per acre. And the off-road area general policies of our land use plan are 3.1, which maintain the area's unique identity by valuing and protecting natural resources, open space, wildlife habitat, and biodiversity through a variety of conservation methods, including but not limited to open space preservation, land acquisition partnerships, and monitoring marsh health. And 3.6 prioritize preservation of open space near marshes and special flood hazard areas to allow for inland retreat of coastal marshes. This text amendment is consistent with the land, land use goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, which encourage development to occur at densities appropriate to environmentally sensitive areas, areas with adequate infrastructure and other planned county services. The land use plan has the objective of considering the compatibility of uses while considering environmental quality, capacity of local infrastructure, and the overall adverse impacts of the development. And the land use policy, goal two is care, to carefully consider the design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility, compatibility issues such as environmental quality, safety, overburdening of local infrastructure, scale, use, design, location, and adverse impacts. Staff recommends approval of the requested text amendment because it is in conformance with the general purpose and instant, and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck Vision Plan, including land use policies goal one and two, and the off-road area policies of 1.1, 3.1, and 3.6. Here's your text review standards, text amendment review standards. If you have any questions, please ask.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Does this affect current, obviously, landowners, but, um, the people who may, I mean, hasn't been opposition at all to this? Has anybody, has there been a, um, meeting of the landowners?
So, uh, the people we've discussed this text amendment with was the Corolla Wild Horse Fund. They have had discussions with many property owners up in the Corolla four-by-four area. And this is, um, the corridor is something that they have expressed interest in. And, um, kind of putting densities towards the east and allowing that marsh and corridor area to be developed and put into conservation easements is something that a lot of people have been talking about for a while. And this is an opportunity to kind of create that development push to allow it. The 50% will be included in a conservation easement and, um, could be worked with the Corolla Banker horses.
And I see that the family, uh, subdivisions gets increased. How does that work?
That's the existing lot size that's required.
Okay.
Any more questions? Anyone that has signed up, especially the applicant, uh, can come forward at this time.
Well, I'm Jay Bender. I am here, but, uh, it's, the presentation, thank you, Jay.
It speaks for itself. Okay, at this time I'll entertain discussion between the board members. Or any more questions for staff? All right, hearing no discussion, I will open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve PB 24-12 Bender SFR Preservation Subdivision Text Amendment because the request is in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one, two, and off-road area policies 1.1, 3.1, and 3.6.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Okay, moving on, number four, under new business, Planning Board 24-07 North-South Development Group LLC. The applicant, North-South Development Group LLC, submitted a text amendment, application to amend the UDO, chapter three, zoning districts to establish a maximum gross density of three dwelling units per acre in the mixed residential slash MXR zoning district in a full-service area, area where dwelling units include a mix of multifamily, single-family, and detached dwellings. The maximum gross density calculation will be based on the land area of the entire tract. This time we'll hear from staff.
Thank you. So the idea here, um, for this text amendment is current, the way the ordinance is currently written, in a mixed-use development, there are different housing types that you can put in your, in your development. For example, seeing, single-family dwelling or cottage development, non-residential uses. And each one of those currently in the ordinance has its own maximum density per acre. So somebody comes in with a development now that has, uh, let's say, single-family dwellings and a commercial component out front by the highway. You would use the, the current allowance of two units per acre, um, just for that area where those types of development are. So you would basically go through the plan and apply different densities to different components of the project. What this text amendment is proposing to do is to allow more flexibility in, in where the density is pulled from and the resulting total density being no more than three units per acre. And this can result in an increase in density, depending on what types of uses are going in there. And we'll, we'll get into that a little more. I, it, it's probably appropriate just to take a look at the, um, the district purpose for this zoning district. Um, and I'll just read through this briefly. The, the mixed residential district is established to accommodate a wide variety of residential use types at moderate densities, as well as low-intensity neighborhood-serving commercial, personal service, and institutional uses outside of community and village centers on the mainland and the outer banks. The district is intended to provide moderate-cost housing options for county residents within well-designed neighborhoods and developments that incorporate open space resources and may also include limited non-residential uses proximate to housing. The district accommodates all forms of residential development, including detached dwellings, apartments, townhouses, manufactured homes on individual lots on the mainland only, accessory dwelling units, and live-work developments. The district also accommodates offices, neighborhood-oriented personal service uses, and retail uses, subject to maximum, maximum tenant-size limits. In addition, the district allows, uh, neighborhood-supporting institutional uses like parks, marinas, religious institutions, schools, recreational facilities, and utilities. Development in the MXR District is subject to various design standards, including community compatibility standards applied to multifamily and non-residential uses proposed adjacent to existing single-family dwellings. And here is a, an overview of the change, uh, as it would appear in the ordinance. And I'll, I've got a slide that zooms in on this a little more, uh, so it's easier to see. But the change occurs here and, uh, and we're looking at the max gross density full service, in a full-service area. So that's important. You have to, and I'll go back to the beginning. In order to take advantage of this text amendment change, you, you need to be in a full-service area with a mixed, uh, mixed development type. In particular, you'd have to have multifamily and single-family detached dwellings. And these, these numbers here are the current maximum densities for each of the types of, um, housing that's allowed in the MXR. Uh, as you can see, single-family detached is limited to two units per acre. Cottage development is three, other multifamily developments also three units per acre. And non-residential uses are at two units per acre currently. Um, and as you can see here, we've put a footnote eight next to that column. And, uh, when you go down below the table, it says, "For conditional MXR developments with centralized wastewater and county water supply, then include a mix of multifamily dwellings and single-family detached dwellings, overall maximum gross density may be increased to three dwelling units per acre based on the total land area of the CMXR tract in accordance with section, uh, 10.3.5." And that section of the ordinance is the section that dictates what you can and cannot include in your land area when you're doing a density calculation. For example, wetlands are not allowed to be included in that calculation. Any questions so far? And you notice it says maybe increased to three dwelling units per acre. So, and not only does it provide flexibility to the developer, it, it also affords them a higher density. The requested text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and action statements of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one, "To encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for their location and consider factors, including but not limited to environmentally suitable areas, suitable soils, adequate infrastructure, the type and capacity of sewage treatment available to the site, the adequacy of transportation facilities providing access to the site, and compatibility and proximity of the site to existing and planned county services." Uh, in the Imagine Currituck implementation matrix, there are several actions, um, that would support this amendment. The countywide action 16, update UDO to provide incentives for development of a variety of workforce housing for mixed incomes. Uh, Northern Mainland Action 13, to incentivize medium-density transitional subdivisions that establish interconnected walkable neighborhoods that link parks and open space in the transitional areas of residential development near Moyac and Currituck. Uh, Northern Mainland Action 20 incentivize the development of multi-generational and senior housing. Uh, Northern Mainland Action 21 require large-scale residential development to include a supporting commercial component or an interconnection to existing adjacent business. Lower Currituck Action 9 promote mixed-use development that includes family entertainment and tourism-supporting businesses south of the water park in Lower Currituck. Lower Currituck Action 10 promote the development of mixed-use Village in Grandy with higher residential density and two-to-three-story buildings constructed to architectural design standards. And Lower Currituck Action 11 encourage and consider incentives for development of a variety of housing. The staff recommendation on the proposed text amendment involves concluding whether the application complies with all applicable review standards, i.e. the text amendment review standards. As presented, staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment because the proposed amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of the MXR zoning district, does not conflict with UDO or Code of Ordnances, is consistent with the purpose and intent of zoning districts, and would ensure efficient development within the county, would result in a logical and orderly development pattern because the maximum density may be achieved where existing wastewater and county water services are available, and implements action items of the Imagine Currituck 24 Vision Plan related to incentivizing development of a variety of housing with supporting commercial, supporting commercial component. Staff recommends approval of this request, subject to the following suggested consistency state, consistency statement, excuse me. The requested text amendment is in the conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one, the G2, G3, and G4 transects and implementation actions identified in the matrix, including CC Action 16, Northern Mainland Action 13, Northern Mainland Action 20, Lower Currituck Action 9, 10, and 11. And I'll leave you with the review standards and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for staff?
If, if I may.
Yes.
The, the regulations as they exist, let's suppose someone were to have a 20-acre parcel and request a change of zoning to MXR. Within the 20 acres, he or she would be permitted to do one, a mix of various uses and so on, but wouldn't be permitted to use, to apply three units per acre of whatever type they are. Is that correct? In other words, the, on, uh, let me see if I can get this right. Per acre, they, for example, would be allowed, let's say, two retail operations and one home. Is that how it works out?
If there was a three-acre parcel you're asking?
If, a total of 20, let's say, per acre, it's, it talks about three uses per acre. Is that, is that what it means that you? That you can have three different uses per acre?
Oh, units per acre. So this is dwelling units?
I see.
Yes.
So if this is adopted, then, let's say, to go back to our 20-acre parcel, if somebody were to seek a change to MXR, they could conceivably have permission for 60 homes?
Correct.
Okay.
Assuming they're meeting the requirements of Section 10.3.5.
And without any obligation to include any other, anything other than single-family?
No, it says specifically that you would have to have a mixture of single-family and multifamily dwellings. It has to be a mixed use.
Residential as opposed to residential and commercial.
Yeah, the requirement, as it's written, is that you would have at least single-family detached and multifamily development in the same, all in the same development.
Okay.
And you also would have to be on sewer and county water, which is another important point.
Because commercials an option, but single-family and multifamily, it has to be those.
Yeah, it has to include those. It has to be on sewer and water.
And it has to have.
And it has to be in a full-service area as well.
Okay.
So does that?
Otherwise, you would be subject to the densities that are already in the ordinance, if you can't meet all of those criteria.
Okay, so a parcel of land right now which doesn't have access, I'm just thinking aloud here, doesn't have access to central sewage, for example, may be able to qualify, but under the rules that they exist today?
Correct. Yep.
And the full-service area typically, does that just run along the corridor typically?
It's generally concentrated around the, like, development areas of Grandy, or, you know, one of the smaller towns.
So wastewater.
It does exist outside that, and it is generally along the highway, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The wastewater, say, up in the Moayoc area, there's some issues.
Correct.
You allow this to go on it with the potential of more density. I mean, it would have to be working wastewater, correct?
Yeah, they would have to have the capacity allocated to the development before they could qualify. Yep.
Does fire ever get considered as infrastructure?
Does what? Fire?
Fire, like, fire department. Is that considered? I mean, is there a breaking point where we continue to?
Because you're talking about adequate facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So not the physical hydrants and water lines, but the ability to accommodate the housing?
Just like police, schools.
Yeah, that is included in the adequate public facilities.
Because I didn't see any.
Got any comments on that, Bill?
I didn't see any comments.
Just the schools now?
Is it just the schools? Okay, never mind. It's not in there anymore.
So there would not be, there would not be, of course, anything required. It was really just residential. There's no, like, saying, okay, you know, stores or anything like that would be in there?
Yeah, those are not required. The non-residential, residential uses are not required. Excuse me.
Let's talk. Okay.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, at this time, anyone that has signed up to speak, please come forward and state your name and address.
Chairman, I actually haven't signed up to speak, but.
That's all right. We've been kind of winging it.
I'm representing the applicant, Mark Bissel, Bissel Professional Group. So, you know, we discovered on a couple of projects, actually during the due diligence in the planning process, that that there was this kind of quirk in the UDO on how you figure density. And really, the MXR zoning district in part is intended to, you know, provide alternate housing types and to, and a particular type that is lacking is apartments for people who work here. And, you know, this housing type has become more important as the cost of a single-family detached house has skyrocketed over the last few years. And this really helps to provide a density that makes it more cost-effective and easier to do a multifamily or an apartment-type project. You know, the staff report has identified numerous ways that this is consistent and compatible with the UDO and the land use plan and county goals and objectives, including opportunities to provide moderate-cost housing options for county residents. And this really helps, helps to do that. One of the questions that I have for staff, and I apologize for not thinking of this sooner, but would, is a duplex considered a single-family detached?
I believe it is. It's allowed in other zoning districts.
Or if not, should we include that in the language? Where it would say, a mix of multifamily and single-family detached or duplex?
Not a bad point.
If the duplex isn't considered single-family detached, and it may not be.
Well, I don't think it would. Would it be single family?
But.
Yeah, I'm not sure the answer to that.
If that's two-family?
Two families.
So could we amend the language to say a mix of multifamily and single-family detached or two-family detached?
So you're wanting to include duplexes, is what you're saying? So, but the calculations would be the same?
Calculations would be the same.
Each unit would still be its own dwelling that gets counted. Yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, given what Mr. Bissel's talking about, you could have now, you could have something that is single families and duplexes. And that would comply? Because would a duplex be considered multifamily?
No, it says, no, duplex, multifamily is defined as three or more units.
Okay, okay.
And there's really nothing in here that prevents you from including duplexes, correct? If that's the route you would want to go, and you just count them as two units, right?
Oh, I think so. I just want to make sure that it does.
I think it just means you have to specifically have single-family and multifamily in order to qualify. That's the way I'm reading it. And you can include any other housing type.
With a duplex being considered single-family?
How does that, how does that? Why does that matter? Explain.
What if you had just multifamily and duplex and no single-family detached lots?
If you did only duplexes?
Only duplexes and multifamily.
Yeah. You're good. Is that something that?
Is this being proposed right now?
I think he's asking specifically, yeah. Yeah, I think it's already allowed the way it is written. But, but they just count as two units.
It would still be two dwelling units. A duplex would still be considered as two dwelling units, even though it's a single-family designation.
It still counts as two dwellings. It's just they're connected. It's a duplex.
So.
It's not considered multifamily, so it doesn't get you that component of the requirements.
So you could just have single family.
It could count as your single-family development.
So in an approval, if there was one, would there need to be a wording change?
No.
Jason?
What?
Jenny just shot me a text.
Yes.
She said it's defined by definition.
It's a single-family dwelling. Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a single-family dwelling?
So it's covered with the, with the language that's been proposed.
Could live there, but it's still considered a single-family dwelling.
Because you're not multifamily until you hit three. So they could certainly do multifamily and duplexes only. And that would qualify.
They could do single-family and duplexes. You could not do that.
That wouldn't get you all the way there because you don't have the multifamily.
Single-family, okay.
Because the main purpose is to make it easier to do the multifamily.
Right. Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Bissel? Okay, I'll open discussion for the board members.
So this kind of just can create a lot more residential development, as I understand it. So, infrastructure, traffic, fire, sewer, water. But we can only consider schools as infrastructure now.
But capacity of sewage is certainly.
Yeah.
Considered.
And water.
And water.
Speaking of water, so parts of Grandy and down county, a lot of those places don't have county water. So would it be a requirement that you would have to have county water?
It is.
It is for this type of.
Sewer and water connection.
And central.
And central sewage, which can be a private company. It doesn't necessarily have to be county sewage, okay? But water is required.
Yep.
And which is county.
Right.
Okay.
And just for clarification on that duplex, that is considered a single-family dwelling, but it's two dwelling units.
Correct.
So it doesn't increase the density?
It does not. Yep, you're still counting units per acre.
It just allows you to get this with duplexes and multifamily.
Right.
Good point, yeah.
So a condominium of, a condominium, if it's on that one parcel property, and let's say that it has six units, is that, that's not a single-family dwelling?
That's a multifamily dwelling, because anything three or more.
So you can get three or more of those on one acre parcel? Is that? How many multifamily dwellings can you get on one acre?
Three.
So just because it'd be on one parcel, would mean it was six units still, still six dwelling units?
So you could get six dwelling units on there? So that would be?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to put it in my head.
Separate it from the acreage.
Right, okay, separate it from the acreage.
Right.
And then it's six dwelling units for that building. And so basically, you have three dwelling units. You'd have to have two acres.
Okay. Sorry, trying to, I sound a little dense here.
No, no, you're not.
A little bit confusing.
Density is one of the most confusing things.
It is confusing, yeah.
But a six, a six-unit multifamily dwelling would take two acres, would require two acres.
Ask me that again?
A multifamily building with six units would require two acres?
It would, because the, if you have qualified to take advantage of this text amendment, where you get the overall three units per acre, then you would have to have two acres to get six units.
But what they, we have to understand, it's not sitting on those acres, on those acres. It's only done in the mathematical computation. That's what I think people get confused on. They keep, when you think that, they think it's sitting on two acres, and it's not.
Right.
It's only part of the computation.
Yep. And there are maximums for the number of units in a single building, for example, for townhomes. The limit is six.
Okay.
Any limit on condominiums, like apartment buildings or anything like that?
I'm sorry, what?
Are there any limits that?
Not for apartments.
Not apartment buildings.
It would just be the density controlling that.
Not, okay, not the building itself and how many units are in there, like the townhouse run. Okay.
Yep.
Any more questions? All right. At this time, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve PB 24-07 North-South Development Group text amendment because the request is in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the UDO and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one, the G2, G3, and G4 transects, and implementation actions identified in the matrix, including CC Action 16, NM Action 13 and 20, and Lower Currituck Action 9, 10, and 11.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed likewise?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays, Mr. Dahl, Ms. Kraus. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, are there any announcements? Hearing none, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Absolutely, second.
All right, meaning adjourn.